I'll call this meeting of the city council to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being recorded by the city council and GCTV-9. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Seeing none, we'll go to roll call of members. Counselor Golub?
Here.
Counselor Gordon?
Here.
Counselor Mastertataro? Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Perry?
Here.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Here.
Counselor Healy?
Here.
Counselor Garrett?
Here.
Counselor Minhaas?
Here.
Counselor Toronzo?
Here.
President Bonnely?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. We'll move on next to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is voluntary. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? They're moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, and actually, I did want to mention that according to our procedures, we do have one, I need to announce that there's one counselor, Bullock, is attending remotely. Counselor Golub?
Yes.
Counselor Gordon?
Yes.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Wandelowski?
Yes.
Counselor Healy?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett?
Yes.
Counselor Minhaas?
Yes.
Counselor Toronzo?
Yep.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes. Moving on to communications, we did not have any topics for the superintendent or school committee chair. We also did not have any for the mayor, but I did have a question if the mayor is online.
I'm here.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't get this in in time, but I thought it might be worth just asking if you happen to know off the top of your head, maybe an update on some of your ARPA spending so far in your term?
Okay, thank you. So, um, we've spent, some of this is, some is going and haven't quite gone yet, okay? The Bachi was a little short on whatever was appropriated, so that was $9,000. There's a personal property assessment that's going to be happening because, as I said in the book, the budget book, the only way that we're going to do better is if we start really capturing. And Randy, our assessor, found that there were several commercial entities that we'd missed, you know, the personal property for years, so that's what that $50,000 is for. Stone Soup is being allocated, this is not signed yet, but is going another $25,000. Conway School of Design, $15,000 for a master plan update. $50,000 for Just Roots, the barn that was ready to fall over as soon as we got in office. I saw another $3,000, and I was, I think that that went for something with the ceiling downstairs, but I'm not sure that could have gone for paint, so I don't want to tell you something that isn't so. And $13,000 or $12,350 is going to be allocated for this year for the rental of the space downtown next to, this is signed, so I can say it, next to Wild Roots, for a substation for the police, so there'll be a downtown presence. And then there's this other thing that I'm not going to try to explain, but it's a software, it's a munis program that brings us into the 21st century, and there'll be a way that people sign in, and the payroll won't need to be done by hand. And there are several other things, and I can get you a better, more clear update on that unless, because I am not the best person to be explaining IT software that is, or an IT program. But, and, and then, the Portland Lou cost less than we thought by $31,000. And that's all new that I think that I have for now.
Thank you, that was helpful, just to get a rough idea, and maybe we can put that on Ways and Means, Next Agenda, just to have it, so that we have it somewhere broken down. Are there any other questions for the mayor?
I just have, and this may be a question without an answer, but we appropriated money for sandblasting a poet's seat, and I was curious if there was any update on preventative measures to keep it from having graffiti on it again. So if there's anything on those kind of lines, I'd be curious, and if not, I'd just be curious on a timetable. I don't know if the sandblasting's already occurred, so just any updates on that.
So, that definitely was talked about, and we've bantered around a plan for that, but nothing, I don't have anything to tell you because I don't like spending money for something when you'd think that it might be happening again. And we did actually have a citizen who's in that line of work that volunteered to do most of the work for the sandblasting, and, you know, he was licensed in that field, so I think that that may greatly defray that. This was the plan that I discussed back and forth with Alan Tuarog and, you know, DPW, that he might use our truck, you know, that reaches up high, and, but he volunteered to help with that, and I don't know where we are with that, truthfully, because I have not been up there, so that's the truth.
I had Counselor Wandelowski. Will you be for me?
Just questions with the, is it the Green River School? I want to make sure I get the right, can you not hear me? No, he can't.
Yes.
So, how much did we receive in grant money for the school? And then my follow-up question is, how have we expended those funds?
So, I actually took a picture of that, because we're, let me see if it's on this. So, in 2015, we accepted money from the MSBA, and I think it was like up to a million and a half was the figure, let me see if I can look at this picture. And, but what we've spent on it, it was for windows, windows, doors, and a roof on that school, let me just see if I have that here. It looks to me like we spent close to a million. And, I guess that must be a madder song. I don't see it right here, but it was close to a million dollars, and I actually found this on the city website, and let me just look and see if it's here. So yes, that's what we spent on that. Do you have further questions about that? You can go on if you want.
No, not at this time, I just wanted to get a sense of what's been spent, so that we know if things go south, how much we're in for.
Right. So, um...
We can go on to some other questions. I had, sorry, everybody had their hand up at the same time, so I had Gordon and Minhaas.
Hi, Mayor, I'm sorry we're all making you talk more tonight because it sounds painful, so I hope you feel better soon, but my question is, speaking of entering the 21st century with technology, we've seen some really concerning incidents recently with fraud and cybercrime in places like Orange, also I know Arlington, Massachusetts, recently had some sort of hack that lost them like half a million dollars. So I'm wondering if you could give us at least a broad sense of how Greenfield's employees are trained on cybersecurity and other kind of fraud prevention measures?
I have talked with Fernando about that because that was, you know, that's something that's been cited in our audit, and that is something that he has done updates on and is working with all the employees with. And I actually, again, Rachel, I think when I'm explaining the cybersecurity and IT things, I can put that on the agenda for next month to give you a better update, because I actually am not the best person to explain that. But I actually asked it because, because I read also, and then I don't like to try to explain something that, it's just not my area of expertise.
Normine, I completely understand, but an update next month would be great, thank you.
Counselor Minhaas?
Counselor Wandelowski kind of asked the question. My question was also, I guess, kind of, are there any, because there was an article in the paper, are there any leads as to potentially what might happen with that building? And this is kind of like a comment slash question. In my conversations with people, and, you know, a lot of council work is just, not spreading rumors, but just talking to people and throwing ideas out there, and people throwing ideas out at you, a lot of people from the community have expressed support for a potential expansion of the YMCA in one form or another, because it's a organization that's done a lot of, and is currently doing a lot of really good community work to help our youth, and we don't have too much, too many organizations that are doing that specifically geared towards youth. And so I just wanted to express that in a formal setting as well. I don't know where that's going. But also, tonight I will be presenting the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund, and I'm sorry to make you speak more than usual, but you did send a letter in, is there like a few sentences you would like to say about that? Thank you.
So, I'm going to say something about both of those. I looked into that after you brought it forward, I've spoken to our assessor, I think it sounds like a wonderful thing, that people could volunteer for, they're certain, volunteer to donate to, and it would be going to those that have difficulties. I'm just going to tell you, for the senior work-off program, I think we had 65 people that signed up. I increased the number this year from 15 to 20, and still there are, you know, 20 signed up out of 65, so certainly there are more than the number that could use a hand. On the Green River School, thank you for that, and Laura, also thank you for asking about it too. It's something that we've been in touch with the, I actually, the superintendent and Andy Picat were in touch with the MSBA, I've been, talked to our attorney, and I'll be in touch with them again. I'm not sure about the, you know, the money that was borrowed, or it was grant funding, actually. The, there are two choices that we had to make with that school, whether it would lay fallow forever, the school did not need it, there, the numbers had decreased, and it wasn't going to go back to being used as a school, so it could remain vacant, or another, another choice is to see if there's an educational purpose for little people that might satisfy the terms of that grant money, so an educational use for children. And, Counselor Minhaas, I appreciate what you said about the YMCA, there are two, two other entities that came forward, and of course, anything like that would have to go out for a bid. I am not sure at this point, but there was someone with music that was interested, somebody with arts that was interested, and education, so all good things, and it's not good for a building to be, to just, to continue to deteriorate when it could be used for another good purpose. So I just wanted you to know that. And I actually had a whole list of topics that I think I sent, that it didn't get to, the, I didn't get to the clerk, but I had other things, so I'll update you more the next time.
Any more questions from counselors? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thanks for being here. I know you're not feeling well tonight, we appreciate you taking our questions tonight. And under communications from other city employees, Clerk Scott could not be here tonight either, so I'm going to address this a little bit as much as I can, the conclusions from the Attorney General for the reviewing executive session meeting minutes. This goes back to December, January, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that they had said in that, reading, this is reading from the, I believe, the Attorney General's, "We find that the council violated open meeting law by failing to review requested executive session meetings at its next meeting following the request." So they found that we violated open meeting law by failing to timely review executive session minutes in response to requests for minutes. "We order the council's immediate and future compliance with open meeting law, and caution that future similar violations may be considered evidence of intent to violate the law. We consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved." So we, basically, this was, this was something that I believe happened mostly in December when it came in and people were out sick, so it was a little frustrating to have that determination, but we are certainly moving forward also in making sure that we review executive session meetings on a regular basis, which had kind of fallen through the cracks. So I believe we've addressed all of that, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear and out in the public. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, or might be able to clarify better than me. Okay, we will move on to public comment, and we'll do our regular three minutes. We will have a timer, so if you hear the alarm go off, try to finish up your thoughts, and just say your name and address, and we'll start with Tom Toeg.
Hello? There we go. I'll try to keep this, oh, my name is Tom Toeg, I'm at 12 Walnut Street here in Greenfield. I'll try to keep this really short. I came here basically to endorse the proposition of setting up a committee to administer funds to help poor homeowners who are behind in their property taxes. As Al Norman's Wednesday Recorder article persuasively demonstrated that a property tax relief program for elderly poor is not only feasible, but the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Armani Margosian, and this is my husband Ted Hinman. We're artists, we live at 180-
Sorry, oh, you just gave name and address.
Yeah, Armani Margosian, we live at 186 Petty Plain Road in Greenfield. And my husband and I had applied into the panel, the, the Underground Railroad Sidewalk Panel Project, and we had to first do a qualifications proposal, and we were both qualified. I'm a Hampshire College full-time student in art and film. My husband Ted, I've been helping him with his business for the past 22 years, he's been an artist for almost 30 years.
And I am an MFA.
Ted has his master's degree in art from the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. He is a very dynamic, talented artist, and he knows a lot about art and multimedia, multimedia.
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, can you move the mic a little closer, but I guess it's hard for people to hear.
You need it closer? I just didn't want it to be so echoing.
I know, it's booming in here.
Yeah. Anyways, what turned out to, what would have been a nice project, we did a lot of research on our own about the Underground Railroad in Greenfield. Steve Strimer down at the David Ruggles Center opened up his museum for us, so we could do the research, and, and the information was not available through the Greenfield Public Library, through their historical room, and we, so the one that I proposed was completely rejected, which everybody thought was going to be accepted, I mean, other artists that I spoke to. And Ted's proposal was accepted, and we received a congratulatory letter. Ted had done his original in colored pencil, and they said, "Oh, well, we just need a, we just need a painted version to attach to the contract." And so we submitted that, and we submitted to Christian LaPlante, and I want to say, the Christian LaPlante, I want to file a formal complaint against Christian LaPlante, against his incompetence and malicious and malevolent behavior towards us. And I also want to complain against the Cultural Crossroads District Committee, and the chair, the co-chairs of that committee, Jackson Williams and Charlotte Triver, or Traver, I don't know how to say her last name, but they are both self-serving, they're on that committee to bring, to enrich themselves, and Christian LaPlante is advertising their business on the City of Greenfield website for their workshops. Now, if you're going to be doing that for Jackson and Charlotte for their workshops, then you should be doing it for Ted's workshops, Ted runs workshops at our home studio in Greenfield, and you should be advertising for Ted on the Greenfield, City of Greenfield. Otherwise, this is what, another example of cronyism in Greenfield. And I think that, yeah, so Ted did a painted version-
Since this is your three minutes, unfortunately, if you got a little steam in here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, we were, Ted submitted his painted version, and then we didn't hear anything from Christian LaPlante. No, it was 12 days. I contacted him to find out what was going on, because we were waiting for the contract. And then he came back and said that it wasn't photorealistic. Now, and if, it was never said that the images had to be photorealistic, then you would have rejected Picasso and Basquiat. You would have rejected-
I'm sorry, that's our, unfortunately, we can only get about three minutes.
Anyways, I just want to say that I will be filing formal complaint against, and he sent me this letter that says that they stand by their decision, and I want to tear this letter up. That's what I think of his letter, that just says, "We stand by what we did." Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Ted, you're next, Ted Hinman?
My name is Ted Hinman, and we both live at, on Petty Plain Road in Greenfield, Mass. And to finish off what Armani has said, yeah, Christian LaPlante was saying it wasn't photorealistic, and then Armani was asking, "What about her drawing?", and he said, "That wasn't photorealistic", so why the hell did he say congratulations in the first place? So we presented something more photorealistic, but then they just rejected it, and the person who had two panels got three, and then there's another person that has like two or three panels, and we got nothing, and I felt that that was a dirty trick, and you could, I mean, you could gloss it over, and you could say that this is a mistake, a misunderstanding, but I don't buy it, I never will, and if you're going to do it better, and if you want to do right by me, then prove it. Invite me to do a proposal and accept it, and if you do that, then I will be satisfied, but if you don't, then I think everybody is full of crap, and I'm sorry to be unkind, but, but this specific thing, and I understand people do get rejected, but this was a dirty prank, and, and if, so if you do that, if you're going to say that you've changed your things and then you've made amends, then the way you're going to prove it to me is that you, another proposal comes up, you invite Armani and I to propose it, and then you accept it, and then we will believe it, and this is the most honest, straightforward thing I can say, and it was clear cronyism, and-
Mayor, do you have audio? I lost audio.
What?
No, I just stopped hearing what he was saying.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Is it really screwed up, or are people trying to shut me up? Well, I'm sorry if I messed with the mic, I didn't mean to. And I echo what Armani and I experienced, we went to the committee meeting, and we really wanted to say things, but they said, "No, you're not part of the committee, so you can't say nothing," and I, and I don't care about that, the point is, is that we were treated like we were refuse, and we have a right to express our grief, and Jackson and that, his partner Charlotte, they were advertising their business, and that just wasn't acceptable, and we are going to let everybody know what was done to us, and, and I don't want it to happen to anybody else.
They said they're working on it, so they know.
Good, I can stop texting people. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Did I, did I really go through the three minutes, or am I just, I'm just going to say one more thing, that if people care about the community, they should go to the projects and the community dinners at the church and reach out to these people, and if they do that, then I buy that this is a community for everybody, the low-income people, and I've met some of them, and I see them as my fellow peers.
Thank you, Ted. Thank, thank you, Ted. Um, Evelyn Ashon Khati? Welcome. Oh, push the button right up and when it turns green, there.
There we go. Hi, my name is Evelyn Ashon Khati at twenty Prentice Avenue in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Um, I'm proud to sit before you today to discuss an important matter of this community. One year ago, on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, the US Supreme Court took a monumental step by unanimously voting to abolish home equity theft. This landmark decision has set a crucial precedent in protecting the rights of homeowners across the nation. Following this decision, the Massachusetts State Senate also voted unanimously on April thirty of two thousand twenty-four to end home equity theft within our states. We are now eagerly awaiting for the final action from the general court, hoping for this unanimous vote to send, hoping for their unanimous vote to send this essential bill to the Governor Healey for her signature. This legislation will provide critical protections for homeowners and ensure their equal, their equality, their equity remains, uh, may remain secure. Sorry, I'm slightly nervous. Um, but tonight, I want to focus on an equally significant local initiative, the creation of the elderly slash the disabled property tax fund here in Greenfield. This proposal aims to establish an important program where local businesses can voluntarily donate, voluntarily donate to support the elderly and disabled neighbors, helping them stay in their homes and avoid the risk of foreclosure. This initiative is not new. It was signed into law on July ninth, nineteen ninety-eight by Governor Paul Salucci, was it? Salucci, thank you. And it has taken twenty-six years to reach Greenfield. Mind you, I'm twenty-seven. Yet its impact has been profoundly spoused in other communities. For instance, Needle Ham has raised over one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in the past twelve years, aiding one, four hundred and twenty-one residents. Similarly, NADIC has raised two hundred and fifty-eight thousand since nineteen ninety-nine, proving substantial support to its elderly and disabled homeowners. Greenfield, with almost four thousand one hundred residents, age sixty-five or older, and five hundred and seventy-four living in poverty, stands to benefit greatly for such a fund. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let's make Greenfield a place where everyone, regardless of age and ability, can feel secure in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Willis Gordon. I currently live at one thirty-two Davis Street, apartment two. Um, I moved to Greenfield in twenty fourteen, uh, June twenty-fourteen, I, um, bought a house, uh, uh, I inherited half the house that I grew up in with my mother and, uh, we sold that and I bought the house here in Greenfield through Grove Street. And, um, I, because of anxiety and depression, I didn't look at my, a lot of my mail, so I was getting, um, uh, late notices for my taxes. I was aware that I was behind in my taxes, but I had no idea how bad it was until somebody came to the door and said I owed twenty-seven thousand dollars. And, um, and, and so I was like, well, how, I, I made up a payment, considered, uh, the minimum payments and the interest and I calculated, uh, what I thought was a feasible plan to, uh, pay all the money back without any assistance, uh, in, in, uh, three, three to five years. And they rejected even considering, uh, that possibility. They said if I had contacted them a year earlier, they would agree to a six-month, uh, plan to pay back the twenty-seven thousand, which is completely preposterous. I'm disabled and I live on social security. Where in the world am I going to get twenty-seven thousand dollars from? Uh, so they threatened to foreclose. Uh, they said there's a very high possibility I would get, uh, because of the increase of lawyer fees and everything and whatever it's auctioned for, there's a very good chance I would get absolutely nothing.
Assistant, no, you-
What?
If I click audio down on the-
Okay, so, uh-
Okay. Yeah, I, I was-
Sorry about that, that was coming from online.
Okay, so, um, uh, I think, oh, there we go. Uh, so I, uh, in, uh, twenty, I believe, twenty nineteen, I, uh, when I was threatened with foreclosure and getting absolutely nothing, I sold my house, which I had bought, uh, in, uh, twenty fourteen for, uh, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. I sold it to my next-door neighbor for thirty-five. And, um, after paying back the city, the taxes I owed, I had twenty-six hundred dollars left, um, which I used to buy a trailer in so I could have somewhere to live, but then I was told it's illegal to live in a trailer. So I just didn't have any thing to go and nothing to, um, hold for. So I just completely lost everything. I, I tried contacting legal assistants, there, there was, I always get, I got absolutely zero help from any legal assistants. And they, they completely rejected my idea of, um, pay, my payment plan idea of paying back the city. I agreed, I owed them the money, um-
Sorry, we've got that, we hit the three-minute mark, if you got a wrap-up.
Yeah, so, so now I live on, uh, rental assistance down the street because I, I can't afford the regular full rent on my social security.
Thank you so much. Versa Clark?
Hello, my name is actually Elizabeth Clark. I live at thirty-four Prospect Street, but I'm called Versa. Um, I'm here today just to show my support for the, um, the tax fund because it, to me, sounds like a win-win for everybody. Um, I don't see any reason why we should not support this. Um, it's going to help people as is the previous person. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Gary Roy?
Hello, my name's Gary Roy. I live at thirty-four Prospect Street with my wife Versa. Um, I'm here to support the tax fund. Uh, I think it's a really humane idea that could really help a lot of people who are having, on, on the borderline having troubles. I personally have a friend who had, uh, in his insurance company tell him that he had to do a huge amount of, uh, landscaping work around his house. I mean, we got together and put together a workday and helped him with all this stuff, but, I mean, he was freaked out because, what, what am I going to do? I have to, you have to buy more expensive insurance and all this, this kind of stuff just goes right down the line and, you know, it comes out in your taxes. So I just think that we should try to help the least among us and that's probably the best thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Marie Jackson?
Good evening, City Council members. I'm Joan Marie Jackson, two Chestnut Hill, Greenfield, Massachusetts. I'm here to talk about the, um, elderly and disabled taxation fund. I regret that homeowners in Greenfield who have had their home foreclosed and their total equity taken from them, even multiple times more than the taxes they owed, had to wait six months for the federal judge to throw out the city's motion to dismiss their complaint. It's unusual for a judge to criticize a city for quote-unquote lining its coffers with equity that did not belong to them. But it's a new era in our city of Greenfield and time for what we unconstitutionally took to be returned to the rightful owners. On a more positive note, our city council is poised to take up on this day, June twentieth, Thursday, an elderly and disabled taxation fund that would allow anyone, including businesses, to contribute towards property taxes owned by low-income elders and individuals with disabilities. This is how we can show that Greenfield now wants to help these neighbors remain living in their homes and that we are no longer in the business of making people homeless. It's about time. Now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitchell Spade?
Mitchell Spade, two Chestnut Hill, Greenfield. First of all, I'd like to thank Council-at-Large Wahab Minas for bringing this ordinance forward. Uh, it's much needed in the city of Greenfield as well as other municipalities throughout the county Franklin County. I present to you a full-page ad, legal notice taken out by the City of Greenfield. This is how we treat our constituents. As you heard the young man earlier, this is the beginning, the inception of tax title taking with the intent to bring harm and injury, the intent to bring harm and injury to its real property owners at a time when they're experiencing financial difficulty. This is unacceptable and we will not tolerate it. You also have neighboring towns that do it also. Here's Orange Asshole playing the same game. We need to stop. I ask that this council vote unanimously tonight to support Council-at-Large Wahab Minas's proposal to establish an elderly and disabled taxation fund for the city of Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Athena? Or Pamela Lou?
Yes.
Oh, yes, there you go, thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Athena, also known as Pamela Lurch, my legal name. And I live at, um, up in the corner, one block down on, at one seventy Davis Street. When Counselor, when Counselor Minha submitted this motion for an elderly disabled tax fund back in March, he had ninety-seven names of Greenfield residents who signed on as supporters. A lot of names you will recognize in public office and in private business. This is a motion from the community. It comes from a place of compassion. It comes from a desire to help those elderly and disabled property owners in our city who may own their property debt free or still have a mortgage to pay, but who hesitate to open their tax bills when they arrive in the mail. I also can relate to this, since my taxes are quite high. What, what else will they cut in order to pay their property taxes? Cut back on food, lower the thermostat, not be able to repair the stove? For many people in this room, property taxes are one of the largest bills we get all year. Greenfield will design how the program works, not the state. This is our program to make work. I hope everyone in town will put in a donation to help us as a community take care of our neediest citizens. Good work begins at home. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you so much. And we have no one on line for public comment, so that will conclude our public comment for tonight. We are still dealing with a technical issue. Um, apparently there's no sound on Zoom, but there is on GCTV. So I think what I'm going to do for the moment is I think we should go through the public hearing and then maybe take a break and see if we have answers by then to, to try to get the Zoom before we debate motions. Um, so- Oh, thank you. Thanks so much. So we'll go to the public hearing on page sixty-one. Counselor Torunzo.
Um, in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenville City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June twenty, twenty twenty-four at six-thirty PM at John's On Community Center, thirty-five Pleasant Street, in Zoom. To receive public input on the following. Transfer three thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars, ninety-two cents from free cash to close out CDBG grant deficits for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Transfer thirty thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year twenty-four legal labor. Appropriate one hundred fifty thousand from Fund Eight Four O Two Capital Stabilization for two marked police cruisers. Appropriate one hundred fifty thousand from FY twenty-four Sewer Enterprise retained earnings to FY twenty-four Sewer Enterprise operating budget. FY twenty twenty-five Community Preservation Budget. Order to approve FY twenty twenty-five Community Preservation Fund Budget Administration Costs and Reserves. Appropriate twenty thousand from CPA undesignated for restoration and repainting historic cornice at two seventy-eight to three oh-two Main Street. Appropriate thirty-nine hundred from CPA Reserve for Recreation for bike racks in Greenfield Parks. Appropriate fifty thousand dollars, eleven thousand four fifty from CPA Reserve for Housing, thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty from CPA designated for new affordable housing design at one fifty-six to one seventy-six Main Street. Appropriate thirty-four thousand eight hundred, twenty-six thousand four fifty from CPA Reserve for Historic, eight thousand three fifty from CPA undesignated to repair the garden block building at three fifty-three to three sixty-seven Main Street. Appropriate one hundred twenty-five thousand, twenty-two thousand five fifty from CPA Reserve for Recreation, one hundred and two thousand four hundred fifty from CPA undesignated for Hillside Park improvements. Appropriate twenty-five thousand six hundred fifty from CPA undesignated for creation of affordable housing at one eighty-seven Hope Street. Appropriate fifteen thousand from CPA Reserve for creation of affordable housing at one eighty-four Petty Plain Road. Appropriate twenty-five thousand six hundred fifty from CPA undesignated for wayfinding signage and map kiosks at Rocky Mountain and Highland Park Trails. The City Council may consider the same on Thursday, June twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four at six-thirty PM at John's On Community Center, thirty-five Pleasant Street, in Zoom.
I believe that's good. Um, I'll open the public hearing at seven nineteen PM. And I don't believe, we didn't have any comments if there's anyone here that would like to speak, um, to those issues. Seeing none, we'll move to the second reading.
Here we go. Uh, transfer three thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars, ninety-two cents from free cash to close out CDBG grant deficits for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Transfer thirty thousand from free cash to FY twenty-four legal labor. Appropriate one hundred fifty thousand from Fund Eight Four O Two Capital Stabilization for two marked police cruisers. Appropriate one hundred fifty thousand from FY twenty-four Sewer Enterprise retained earnings to FY twenty-four Sewer Enterprise operating budget. FY twenty twenty-five Community Preservation Budget. Order to approve FY twenty twenty-five Community Preservation Fund Budget Administration Costs and Reserves. Appropriate twenty thousand from CPA undesignated for restoration and repainting historic cornice at two seventy-eight, three oh-two Main Street. Appropriate thirty-nine hundred from CPA Reserve for Recreation for bike racks in Greenfield Parks. Appropriate fifty thousand dollars, eleven thousand four fifty from CPA Reserve for Housing, thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty from CPA undesignated for new affordable housing design at one fifty-six to one seventy-six Main Street. Appropriate thirty-four thousand eight hundred, twenty-six- Appropriate $34,800, $26,450 from CPA reserve for historic, $8,350 from CPA undesignated to repair the garden block building at 353 to 367 Main Street. Appropriate $125,000, $22,550 from CPA reserve for recreation, $102,450 from CPA undesignated for hillside park improvements. Appropriate $25,650 from CPA undesignated for creation of affordable housing at 187 Hope Street. Appropriate $15,000 from CPA reserve for creation of affordable housing at 184 Petty Plain Road. Appropriate $25,650 from CPA unddesignated for wayfinding signage and map kiosks at Rocky Mountain and Highland Park Trails.
I will close this hearing at 7:21 PM. I'm just going to recognize Counselor Bullock. Can you... I think we should take a five-minute break and see if we can sort out this problem with Zoom.
Yeah, apologies. I haven't... I don't have audio, and I... Can you hear me? Can you give a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, great. I don't have audio, and I can't connect to two sources because I'm in an actual canyon in Montana and on a hotspot. But, so I'm going to sign off because it's useless for me to be here. But I just do want to voice my support for the tax fund that Counselor Minhas has presented to us tonight. For new counselors, this is an issue that's been brought up for my entire time, the last three years on council. So if I could vote tonight, if we had Zoom audio, I would be voting in favor of it, and I'm sorry that I can't. But I will... I'm going to sign off, so I can't hear any of you. And I don't think it will be like a legal meeting or anything for me to be here without being able to hear.
I know you can't hear, but thank you, and I'm sorry. We're going to keep working on this technology problem. Do we want to take our five-minute break or go on? Let's plow forward. Motions, orders, and resolutions. This would go to Counselor Gola, I believe.
I am happy to read it. It's not something that we discussed. I'm on page sixty-three. Is that where everyone else is?
Yep.
Okay. Order number fiscal year 24131. The city council moved that it be ordered that in accordance with Greenville's Home Rule Charter, Section 28B, the Greenville City Council reelects Catherine J. Scott as city clerk for a term of three years effective July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. Majority vote required.
Second up.
I'll open this up for discussion. I believe this is just a process that we need to elect a clerk every three years. And Kathy is absolutely phenomenal. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Garrett.
Kathy is absolutely phenomenal. I'm very grateful just being a new counselor. She really was extremely helpful in kind of figuring out where this laptop was, for example, things like that. So, that's all.
Counselor Minhas?
Hello. Okay. Yeah, I don't want to take up too much time, but Kathy is amazing. And I'm sorry, Kathy, for not submitting my number plates. But this is how I'm making it up to you. I support you 100%. Thank you for the work you do.
Any other comments? Let's move forward to a vote, which I don't believe we need to do roll call.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Abstentions? The motion passes. We are going to take a five-minute break since we have IT. So, see you in five.
Welcome back, everyone. Hopefully, there is audio on Zoom. But either way, it's on GCTV and we're going forward, so we're going to continue with our motion, the second motion, which is the mayor's appointment, and this is Counselor Golub.
Order number fiscal year 24132, the City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 210 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Greenfield Housing Authority, Randy Parks, tenant representative, term to expire December 31st, 2029, five-year term per MGL. Community Preservation Committee, Travis Drury, Conservation Commission appointee, and Susan Orgatic, City Council appointee, both terms to expire December 31st, 2027. Cemetery Commission, Jessica Gershman and Erin Bohan, thank you, both terms to expire December 31st, 2027, majority vote required. And we did not meet-
Need a second on that. Second?
We did not meet this month, so this is the first time it's being heard.
So we'll open this up for discussion. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? The motion passes. The next motion, the authorization of the Elderly Disabled Taxation Fund on page 72. Counselor Golub?
Order number fiscal year 24130. The City Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 4D, votes to authorize- what, 3D? 3D. Thank you. Chapter 60, Section 3D, votes to authorize establishment of an elderly and disabled taxation fund for the purposes of defraying the real estate taxes of elderly and disabled persons of low income. Majority vote required. And this, we made sure to discuss this in our May meeting, and we, A&amp;O, and we voted unanimously in favor.
I'll open this up for discussion. Counselor Minhass, would you like to speak to this, since you were one of the main sponsors?
Yes. So, first off, I'd just like to thank everyone who had a hand in bringing this proposal to this stage. This was a community-led effort, and essentially, you know, this is, I have been involved in this effort for months now, even before being elected and during the campaign, but this has been around for many a year, I think, even before I was born, and we could have capitalized on this, but, you know, better late than never. And so, I think, just to explain to the public, to people who, this has been in the paper a few times and kind of been talked about, but just to explain to anyone who hasn't heard of this, or just to clarify, essentially what this is, is the city recognizing that taxes are not fun to pay, taxes are hard to pay, especially property taxes, and they are particularly high in the city. And in response to that, specifically for our elderly and disabled folk who are living on a fixed income now and are in that stage of life where they can no longer work, or no longer work, but they have been, they require some support to pay off these ridiculously high taxes. So basically, this is a voluntary tax fund. Any individual, private citizen or business, can chip into a voluntary fund, and you don't have to if you don't want to, if you don't have the means, or you simply don't want to, you don't have to participate, but if you want, you know, out of the kindness of your heart, to have good standing in the community, you can chip in, and essentially that fund will be doled out under the mayor's jurisdiction through a committee, which will also be voluntary. No one will be paid on the committee. That will all be voluntary. So essentially, that's what it is, and what that does is help people keep their homes, help them stay in their homes, in a humane and just way, and not get them onto the path of home equity theft and homelessness and all of that, specifically given the demographics of the city where we have an increasingly disabled, elderly and disabled population. I think this would be very, very beneficial, and specifically given the economic crisis that we are going through right now, the cost, the living, the living cost is going up exponentially, transportation, housing, medicine, food, all of these things are rising, and on top of that, you get slapped with a tax bill. People have a hard time, so now they have to choose between, hey, do I, you know, get in trouble with the city and potentially lose my home and that, or do I pay my electricity bill? Do I pay my healthcare insurance? Do I get my meds? Do I, you know, so this is, instead of having people make those hard and inhumane decisions, this is a way to make a dent in that. You know, people have said before, this is not something new, this is, you know, it's been around for a while, through MGL, this is actual law, and many other cities have participated, some better than others, and I can assure you that we have a vibrant community which doesn't like to shut up, won't just sit by on the sidelines, people will participate, people will get the word out there, and also I have faith in our business community and in our individuals that do have the capacity to help, that they will chip in. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say that this is a, along the series of other decisions that the council has made and that the executive of the city has made since taking office, I'd like to say that this reflects a change in administration, a change in a revived council, to say that we are on your side, to tell people that we are here to help you. We're not just this bureaucratic body that just, you know, authoritarian body that just does whatever and votes on issues that don't really have anything to do with you, or they do and you don't have any say. No, we're here to actively help you. We're not paid much, but we are here to help you. You are not lost when, when you go to the grocery store and things are expensive, and when you try to pay your bills and things are expensive and it hurts. We can't do too much, but we will try the best that we can, and we are here for you, so you are not alone, and this is intent by many of our counselors, by the mayor, by community members, to rally people together and say that this is a community in which people feel safe and included and held. We're not going to throw you to the wolves, and we are definitely not going to be taking your homes. So I urge my counselors, who I've talked to, and they have expressed their support, and I thank them for that, and I'm honored to be presenting this. A lot of other people have worked a lot on this, and I'd like to thank them as well, but again, I hope people vote in favor for it. Sorry for just rambling on and on, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Minhass. Any other comments on this? Yes, Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Counselor Minhass and Counselor Master Dataro for bringing this forward. I've, I think we've all received, this is very loud, dozens of emails about this, and every single one has been nothing but enthusiastically positive about it, as it should be. I think this does seem like a win-win, as someone said earlier. And I think, you know, early on in A&amp;O, we had some questions about like the nitty-gritty and the, and the actual implementation of this, because the devil is always in the details, and I think in advance, the people who are going to be figuring that out, because that is also going to be a lot of volunteer labor, but I think this is a great idea. I'm thrilled to support it, and I, I hope this is another way for people to get some of the help they need.
Counselor Wandelowski?
I just want to thank, ooh, this is so loud. I want to thank Louis for telling his story. I lived around the corner, and I remember when you were going through that whole process, and it was heartbreaking, and to, to see our neighbors being turned out of their homes, and another house across the street from me, on Conway Street, also was foreclosed on. So this is a real issue, and something that we can do as a community to lift people up instead of push them down. So I appreciate the opportunity to take proactive action, because I feel like often, as a body, we're asked to react to things, so it's nice to have folks stepping forward. So thank you for doing so, and thank you to all of you who have pushed for this. We've heard you.
Counselor Golub?
Yeah, I also want to thank Counselor Minhass. I, this was, when he brought it forward, this was the first time that I had heard of this option and was really grateful, increasing to one I represent, I don't know what the average age, but my constituents are significantly older than I am, and talking to them last year and going door-to-door and asking them what issues matter to them, property taxes were one of the biggest issues, and so I was extremely excited to see this being an option. So thank you for bringing it forward, and then also thank you to the folks from the community who have come to this meeting and who've written us and came to A&amp;O. It was really, I moved to see new faces and people I haven't heard from yet. I'm really happy to see people who I see regularly, but it means a lot to see new people from the community taking a stand on a really important issue, so welcome, and I'm excited to get to vote yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Order number FY2414, in order to transfer $3,854.92 from free cash to closeout CDBG grant deficits, moves that it be ordered to transfer the amount of $3,854.92 from free cash to closeout deficits in CDB, CDBG grant years 2018 and 2019. Majority vote required.
Just need a second on that.
Second.
Report?
Positive unanimous from the committee.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Order number FY24115, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, in order to transfer $30,000 from free cash to FY24 legal labor, moves that it be ordered to transfer the amount of $30,000 from free cash to legal labor special litigation account, line 010015005305, to provide funding for unexpected legal labor costs incurred. Majority vote required.
Discussion, or a report first?
Positively unanimous.
Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? The motion passes.
Order number FY24116, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, in order for two police cruisers, moves that it be ordered to appropriate the sum of $150,000 for two marked police cruisers, and to meet said appropriation, $150,000 be transferred from Fund 8402 capital stabilization. Majority vote required.
Second.
Report from committee?
It was also positively unanimous on that.
Discussion? Counselor Golub?
I just have one question. If you could share, I know that last year when we spoke about the cars, that there was a big discussion about leasing versus purchasing, and I'm curious what that conversation sounded like at lease and use this year, and why, why the decision to purchase versus lease.
Yep. So this was discussed first at the Capitol Committee earlier this year, and, well, would have been discussed, it got, the, the request got pulled from Capitol right before we already discussed it, for one reason or another, but the, the idea going forward of leasing vehicles is something that I, I believe this mayor is looking forward to getting back on track, but we're so far behind in the schedule for replacing cars, and I believe, you know, we've been told that a couple of times at this point, and with it being more of an immediate need and there being availability in Capitol to do this now, would help get the department back on schedule to be more of a routine, picking up when you need them, and then having it go more through an operational budget than a Capitol request.
Counselor Wandelowski?
I understand how important it is to replace these cars and get us back on track. One thing that we did discuss in committee is the need to start electrifying our fleet, so I'm going to vote for this one now, but future ones, I really don't want to support any more gas cars at the level that we are. East Hampton, other communities have police vehicles, so it's not something that is not doable.
Counselor Garrett?
I just want to echo what Counselor Wandelowski was saying about electrification of the vehicle fleet in the city in general. One of the things that came up during the budget process, when we were looking at just stabilization funds and kind of reading through the budget book, is there's been a change in state law that allows for stabilization funds to be created for purposes beyond just what they've historically been used for. So you can effectively create a stabilization fund that acts as a piggy bank for needed things like upgrading your vehicle fleet to electric vehicles, building the charging stations necessary. During the budget process, the chief very ably kind of responded to the questions we had about these vehicles, because they had already come through, we had seen them in some sort of email, and so I, you know, in addition to the concerns about the gas fleet in the future that Counselor Wandelowski expressed, I would also love to see us start investing and, you know, putting money in our piggy bank effectively for making a shift.
I think that's also a great topic for, at some future point, to get Carol Collins, the Director of the Energy Department, and the mayor maybe to report in what direction they're going to take with the fleet, because it's my understanding that, that Carol, I believe, would be taking a closer look at all the vehicles in the city, which would be great. More comments? Discussions? Yes, Counselor Garrett?
Just a follow-up about Carol Collins. She had spoken at some point about having, you know, this particular vehicle purchased not being the time to electrify, which was persuasive to me, but in the future, I know that's something that she's, I'm sure, going to be involved in.
Yes, Counselor Minhass?
I'd just like to say I think the department is making significant changes in the way that they operate, in the, in their perception and in their perception of public feedback, and I think they are trying to step in the right direction, and this is something that they need to do their work, and I'd just like to thank them for the work that they do.
Any other comments? Seeing none, let's vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? The motion passes.
Order number FY24117, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, in order to appropriate $150,000 from sewer retained earnings to the FY24 sewer enterprise operating budget. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $150,000 from sewer enterprise retained earnings to the FY24 sewer enterprise operating budget. Majority vote required. This is positively unanimous from committee as well.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Again? Abstentions? The motion passes. Onto community preservation, page 94.
City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, oh, sorry, order number FY24118, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, in order to approve FY2025 community preservation fund budget admin cost and reserves. Ordered that the city vote to appropriate and reserve from community preservation fund annual revenues, the sums recommended by the community preservation committee for committee administrative expenses and reserves in fiscal year 2025, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriate FY25 CPC administrative expenses in the amount of $13,035, 5%. Reserve $117,315 from FY2025 community preservation fund revenues for community preservation fund purposes. FY25 annual budget reserves, 45%. Reserve $26,070 from FY2025 community preservation fund revenues for open space, 10%. Reserve $26,070 from FY2025 community preservation fund revenues for historic resources, 10%. Reserve $78,210 from FY2025 community preservation fund revenues for community housing, 30%, majority vote required.
Second.
Positively unanimous from committee.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? The motion passes.
Order number FY24119, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor Disorger, in order for community preservation, restoration, repainting of the historic cornice. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA undesignated the sum of $20,000 for a total of $20,000 for the restoration and repainting of historic cornice at 278 to 302 Main Street as recommended by the community preservation committee. The amount requested will be used for rehabilitation and repainting of historic cornice of the 278 to 302 Main Street building. Majority vote required.
Second.
Second?
This was positively unanimous from committee. We also did get an update that had just come through like a day or two before, that the purported amount that was going to be needed to do this is looking like it's going to be less, and that, just to note that in the event that it is, comes in completely less than it was, this whole 20,000 might not need to be used for it, because these, these funds get used last. The other funds would be distributed first, and then these would make up for whatever's lacking, so, for them to, I think the original amount was something like 50,000, but it's looking like it's probably going to be more like 25 to 30 is what we were hearing, so, even if we, and if it doesn't get used, it goes back into their coffers for future projects.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to appreciate that now I know what a cornice is, having lifted up so that I could knowledgeably vote on this motion.
Any, any other comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? The motion passes. Abstention, the motion passes.
One-twenty, yeah, okay, order number FY twenty-four one-twenty, City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation bike racks in Greenfield Parks. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserve for recreation the sum of thirty-nine hundred for a total of thirty-nine hundred for bike racks in Greenfield Parks as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used to install bike racks at key locations on Greenfield recreational properties, including trailheads and parks, majority vote required.
Second.
This was positively unanimous as well.
Discussion? Yes, Counselor Gordon?
This is an actual question, just curious, when we install something like bike racks, does that then become the purview of DPW for upkeep? Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four dash one-two-one, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation downtown Greenfield Housing. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserve for housing the sum of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and from CPA undesignated the sum of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for a total of fifty thousand dollars for downtown Greenfield Housing as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for feasibility and design of new affordable housing at one-fifty-six to one-seventy-six Main Street, majority vote required.
Second.
Second.
This was a positive unanimous recommendation as well.
Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Golub?
I'm just curious to hear more about the project, in reading the notes, I didn't, it left me curious what the project is.
Where? Oh, wow.
Yeah, what exactly is the project, I'm almost certain that I will support it for affordable housing, but I'd love to hear more about what it is.
Susan Moore Gafferty is in the audience, she has made note that she was available if we had any questions, and she can explain it probably more concisely than I can.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What this is, is in prior years, this block, which includes the area after the alley between, at Greenfield Market, that block of buildings, used to have three stories. It no longer has them, so the building can handle additional stories. This is a feasibility study to check on whether it is, what that would look like and how it would work. It will be, it will be somewhere between twenty and forty apartments, we don't know, it depends on the size, obviously, and a whole lot of other things, and that's what this study is designed to do, is to look at that, figure that out, and make it possible. All of the apartments will be below a hundred percent of area immediate income, that's required both by CPA, and it also is what we want to do. And the other thing, it will be developed through Rural Development Inc., and once the apartments are in place, the Regional Housing Authority will be the manager. So this is an entirely affordable development that we plan to have.
Do you have any questions for Susan? Yeah. Counselor Minhov?
I just, I'm just trying to situate myself, maybe I, like, where exactly is it where the...
Where the food pantry is, where the gym is, the taekwondo, that's, that set of buildings, that building, there are two buildings, actually, two parcels there, and above them is the, so it'll be, there'll be, there'll be an elevator involved, all of them will, there'll be...
So we're not moving anyone?
We're not moving anyone out, no, we're not moving anyone out of existing space, we'll be building new space.
So nobody is there right now?
No one's there right, they build, the two floors don't, no longer exist, so we will be putting two new floors onto that building.
Okay, I see, thank you, thank you.
Any more questions? Counselor Garrett?
This is more of a general question, but, and you may not know the answer, but are you aware of any sort of height restrictions in our zoning code and all, I don't know if that's...
I believe it's four floors right now.
Four floors?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
More discussion? Counselor Golub?
Just to follow to that, so why not explore four floors there, as opposed to just...
I think, I think, I think that has to do with the capacity of the lower floors to be able to support the upper floors, and we know that there, we've got pictures, we know that there were two floors above it, we don't know, it's an old building, we don't know if we could, we could put more than that up there.
I'm so sorry, okay, how many units slash or people could it support?
It's anywhere from twenty to forty, it depends on if we have a bunch of small apartments, if we have larger family apartments, how that, what that mix looks like, and this study is designed to look at all of that, and to try to make it, you know, work, so I don't know, we don't know the answer to those questions yet, but that's what this is for.
Any more discussion? Thank you. Let's vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-twenty-two, City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation repair of Garden Block Building, ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserve for historic the sum of twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and from CPA undesignated the sum of eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of thirty-four thousand eight hundred for the repair of the Garden Block Building as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for rehabilitation, restoration of historic exterior and first-floor facade of the Garden Block Building at three-fifty-three to three-sixty-seven Main Street, majority vote required. Yeah, this was positively unanimous from committee as well.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four dash one-two-three, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation Hillside Park improvements. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserve for recreation the sum of twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and from CPA undesignated the sum of a hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Hillside Park improvements as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for installation of shade structure and the completion of a walking path around the perimeter at Hillside Park, majority vote required. That was also positively unanimous.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-twenty-four, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation housing Hope Street. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA and designated the sum of twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a total of twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for Hope Street housing as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used in creation of affordable housing at one-eighty-seven Hope Street, majority vote required. That was positively unanimous.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four dash one-two-five, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, disorder, an order for community preservation housing Petty Plain Road. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA reserve for housing the sum of fifteen thousand for a total of fifteen thousand for Petty Plain Road housing as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used in creation of affordable housing at one-eighty-four Petty Plain Road, majority vote required. Spoiler alert, unanimous positive recommendation.
Discussion? Counselor Garrett?
Just really quickly, I just want to thank Susan, the Community Preservation Committee, for the focus on housing in this kind of, I don't know what you'd call it, this cycle, and also the next one. One of the things that I remember them discussing is just the idea of getting more bang for your buck if you focus your energy, and this is a huge knee in the city, you know, all the stuff that we were talking about with taxes and property taxes, well, that gets easier if housing is affordable, so this focus is huge, and I hope it continues, and it looks like it's going to, so, thank you to the committee, and I'm glad for this focus.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-two-six, the City Council upon recommendation of Mayor We, oh, oh my god, Mayor Disorga, get that drain in your brain for a couple of years, right? An order for community preservation wayfinding at Rocky Mountain and Highland Park. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate from CPA undesignated the sum of twenty-five thousand six fifty for a total of twenty-five thousand six fifty for wayfinding at Rocky Mountain and Highland Park Trails as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The amount requested will be used for construction and installation of uniform wayfinding signage and map kiosks that fit into the natural landscape, majority vote required.
Second.
Positive unanimous.
Discussion, Counselor Golub?
I have been walking back there several times recently, and was recalling how last year we appropriated fifty thousand dollars from capital for the wayfinding, and have been wondering where that, where those funds are at. I know that in reading more of the details here, it sounds like they're undergoing a study of the trails, and I'm just curious about the timeline of when we will start seeing the signs, not necessarily expecting you to be able to completely answer that, and this could be, if you're not, this could, this could be a topic for the mayor to speak on, but curious what you, what you know, or what you all know, or what we know about where we're at with that.
Yeah, this has been, this is a long-term project, and there is an assessment being done of the trails, and part of the issue is that some of the trails may be going onto private land, and, you know, it wasn't planned that way, but it has happened, so that, so one of the things that they're looking at is exactly what trails are appropriate to be included in the system, and what are not, or what sections of trails have to be moved, so that's part of the issue. What we have funded is signage, so regardless of all of that, signs are really poor in Highland Park and on Rocky Mountain, and so this will go ahead regardless. We also decided that at this point, with the amount of money that we had, we would not fund the kiosks, the kiosks are pretty expensive, and so if that's going to happen, they'll either be coming back to us or coming back to you to get additional funding, but this is mainly for signs.
Yeah, Counselor?
Will the signs be, will the signs be able to be installed before the analysis of the trails is complete?
I think those trails that we know are definitely within the borders of public land, will probably be done earlier, and those that are questionable will be wait, they'll be waiting until we get that all clarified.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to say, I wouldn't hurt if we, you know, could reach out to Chrissy and see if they've gotten an update on it, because I think the last time we heard about this was still when there was, the little bit we got, but the snow on the ground, as they were trying to, as, because it was through FERCOG, I believe, if I remember right, that is doing the mapping essentially, and just to get an update on whether or not they think there are going to be legal fees incurred, or negotiations, you know, easements, anything like that, that might have to happen, but yeah, it'd be good to get an update.
Great, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against? Abstention, the motion passes. And actually, before we move, we're gonna go on to transfers, end of year transfers, but I wanted to thank the CPA Committee also, they do a fantastic job of reviewing the projects and reaching out to the community, it's really a thorough job, so thank you. Counselor Taranzo, end of year transfers.
She thinks. I'm trying to get there, I want to make sure I got them in order right for, yeah. One-thirty-three, okay. Order number FY twenty-four one-three-three, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, FY twenty-four end of year transfer request, move that it be ordered that the sum of twenty thousand be transferred from zero-one-zero-zero-one-two-three-zero-point-five-one-one-one, chief of staff salary to the following general fund accounts. Zero-one-zero-zero-one-two-zero-zero-point-five-one-one-one, mayor department full-time salary, eight grand. Zero-one-zero-zero-one-five-zero-zero-point-five-three-zero-five, legal labor, ten thousand. Zero-one-zero-zero-one-six-five-zero-point-five-one-one-one, licensing, full-time salary, two thousand dollars, balancing, chief of staff salary, thirty-six thousand eight forty-two and forty-six cents, majority vote required.
Positive. Positive. Any discussion? Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I'm just curious why there appears to have been a lot of, hopefully excess money in the chief of staff salary line?
The position was vacant for a while?
Got it.
And so it wasn't needed.
Makes sense.
Yeah, Counselor Minhov?
So this is a reduction in the chief's staff salary?
Just for the end of this fiscal year, that's ending in ten days, it's clearing up when they, when they see that there's like an excess in certain accounts, it gets moved, you know, you might move it to something that you need to pay, otherwise, it would just go back to free cash, so.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-three-four, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, FY twenty-four end of year transfer request, move that it be ordered that the sum of twenty thousand be transferred from zero-one-zero-zero-two-one-three-zero-point-five-one-one-one, dispatch salary to the following general fund accounts. Zero-one-zero-zero-twenty-two-hundred-point-five-one-six-seven, fire department buybacks, twenty thousand dollars, balancing dispatch salary, forty-five thousand eight forty-nine and twenty-three cents, majority vote required. This was a positive recommendation for committee, from committee, but there was a question, this one also affects one of the other ones down the road, that if the mayor's still here, maybe could answer. I've never seen the term "the buybacks," I've never seen this account on there, so I, we were all just kind of, what was that, what does that go to for?
Sure.
Got it?
I'm thinking that that's like unused sick time, vacation time, buyback that you're entitled to when you retire.
That's what we were pondering.
But without more definition, I can't be a hundred percent certain.
I don't know if the mayor's still on the line, or...
Do you want to take that?
I, I'm here. That's, I think directed a very good job, he had some people leave, and when people leave, sometimes they have a fair amount of time that they haven't used, so I think that's what the buyback is, why we do that, and I also want to say that at the end of the year, this is something that frequently happens, that you're transferring from one line to another, you have excess in one line, and a shortfall in another one, so you'll probably see this again next year.
Thank you, any more questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-three-five, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, FY twenty-four end of the year transfer request, move that it be ordered that the sum of fifteen thousand be transferred from zero-one-zero-zero-one-five-five-zero-point-five-one-one-one, Greenfield Technology Department salary to the following general fund accounts. Zero-one-zero-zero-one-nine-seven-zero-point-five-two-zero-nine, Millbrook Solar, fifteen thousand, balancing Greenfield Technology Department salary, thirty-four thousand four ninety-eight-seventy.
Second.
Also positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY twenty-four one-three-six, the City Council upon recommendation of the mayor, FY twenty-four end of year transfer request, move that it be ordered that the sum of fifteen thousand be transferred from zero-one-zero-zero-five-one-one-zero-point-five-one-one-one, Health Department salary to the following general fund accounts. Zero-one-zero-zero-one-nine-seven-zero-point-five-two-zero-nine, Millbrook Solar, fifteen thousand, balanced Health Department salary, twenty-eight thousand three-ten and seventy-six cents, majority vote required. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, I have been informed also that we need to clearly say yes when we vote so that we're not in violation of any policies. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Or I? And abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY24-137. The city council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of twenty thousand be transferred from 01002120.5247 Parking Meters Contracted Services to the following general fund account. 01002100.5167, Police Department Buybacks, two eighty thousand dollars. Balance and Parking Meters Contracted Services is twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars thirty cents. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY24-138. The city council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of ninety-one dollars be transferred from 01001750.5711, Planning Board Meetings to the following general fund accounts. 01001710.5733, Conservation Commission dues, ninety-one dollars. Balance and Planning Board Meetings, two hundred and five dollars. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah? Against? Abstention, the motion passes.
Order number FY24-139. City council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of ten thousand six hundred and forty dollars fifty cents be transferred from 01007100.59991, principal paydown to the following general fund accounts. 01003990.5652, Smith Vocational, ten thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. 01007510.5901, State Qualified Debt, twenty dollars. 01007520.5925, Short Term Interest, one hundred and eighty-six dollars fifty cents. Balance and Principal Paydown, eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yeah?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion carries.
Order number FY24-140. The city council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of seventy-five thousand be transferred from 01001320.5781, Reserve Fund to the following general fund account. 01001510.5302, City Legal, seventy-five thousand dollars. Balance in Reserve Fund, seventy-five thousand dollars. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah? Against? Abstention?
Order number, order number FY24-141. City council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered the sum of one hundred and thirty-six thousand twenty-eight dollars be transferred from 01009140.5181, Retirement Supplemental to the following general fund account. 01009160.5181, Medicare City Match, seventy thousand. 01009400.5751, Inland Marine Liability, forty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. 01009400.5748, Commercial Prop Liability, twenty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Balance and Retirement Supplemental, one hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty and forty-eight cents. Majority vote required.
Positive.
Discussion? Yes, Council Gordon?
What is inland and marine liability?
I found out after the meeting. It's insurance on goods transported by road or rail. It's apparently like, I know. So I, there's a history to it and I will defer. Insurance came from the shipping industry basically, and so that's where it comes from. Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? The motion carries.
Order number FY24-142. The city council upon recommendation of the mayor. FY24, end of year transfer request. Move that it be ordered that the sum of sixteen thousand dollars be transferred from 01009120.5740, Workers Compensation Insurance to the following general fund accounts. 01006100.5112, Library Part-Time Salary, five thousand dollars. 01008300.5631, State Assessment Special Education, eleven thousand dollars. Balance and Workers Compensation Insurance, seventeen thousand three hundred and eighteen. Majority vote required. So this one strangely was also positively unanimous.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention, the motion carries. There are no presentation of petitions, similar papers, report from any committees? No unfinished business, there was none, any old business? New business? No motions for reconsideration, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Yeah? We are adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM.